Let's have a look at it, just quickly.
Sounds like it's working.
I'm on that. Are we saying that we haven't snapped for the mayor?
You're going to be snapping during it as well. You've got your phone? Do a couple on your phone just for us, is that right?
Yes, it did, yeah, yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, please be upstanding for the councillor Nick of Donoghue or Mayor.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome.
I get the microphone and start again. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight, the very first town council annual, oh sorry, town annual meeting, the first ever of the newly formed Taunton Town Council. So please do take a seat. Before we begin, I do have a number of housekeeping rules. So your mayor is instructing you on how to behave for the evening. The very first item, of course, is in the event of a fire, there were no scheduled fire tests tonight, so if the fire alarm should go, the exits are clearly marked by the green. You have one at the side down the bottom here, one back at the top and out of the side, where if you go out through there, you can walk down to the car parks. There are torrids just through those doors and round to the left. If you have a mobile phone, if you could please turn it to silent, so that tonight's meeting is being recorded, you have the cameras at the back. If you do not wish to appear, then please just keep facing front. They are at the back, they're just videoing the backs of your heads, so I doubt anyone should be able to identify you from that. There are refreshments, and I hope you've had some tea and coffee and biscuits already. There are soft drinks available, the bar is open, but it will not be serving any alcohol, it is purely just soft drinks. So, as I said at the beginning, this is the very first annual town meeting for the newly formed Town Council. Someone once said that the golden rule of business is to put itself in its customers' place. Well, tonight is about us, the council, putting ourselves with you, the residents of this town of ours. The meeting will take the form of three parts. The first part is reporting, second part celebrating, and the third part is engaging. So the first part of this evening, you'll be hearing a report from councillor Deacon about what the council has been doing this year, in its first year as a council. We'll also be hearing a report from Haven and Somerset Police, so welcome the police officer involved. And after that, we'll be moving, oh, you'll also be hearing from some of the grants, people that have received grants from us this year, they will be making some presentations. The second part is celebrating, and we will be awarding people from this town who have made significant contributions to our community and to the life of this town, and we look forward to doing that. And the third part of this evening will be to engage, engage with you, the residents, and it's an opportunity for you to ask us any questions. So with that, we will start off, and I would like to introduce to you councillor Tom Deacon, who is going to report to us what the Town Council has been doing for its first year. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr Mayor, thank you Nick. Good evening, everybody. Evening, thank you, thank you, a bit of participation early on. So I'm going to give you a bit of a flavour of the things that we've been up to over the past 12 months, a bit of what we're looking to achieve, and a bit of our ambitions, what we want to deliver for the town. We're conscious that we're a new town council, Taunton hasn't had this level of representation for about 50 years or so, and we know that what you want to see from us is to deliver against our ambitions and to deliver against your ambitions, and to ultimately give your value for money from your town council. So that's our job. So my job today is to give you a bit of flavour of how we started doing that and what we plan to do as the years roll forward. There's a bit of guff from me about where we've come from and who we are, and about some of our ambitions. We'll share all of these slides afterwards, so you'll be able to see them, but really, I've just set out our ambition and how important I think us having this level of representation is in our town. We have a brilliant town clerk, who I'm going to embarrass, who's Donna, who's at the front here, and Donna leads our staffing team at the Town Council, which is growing, an excellent team of amazing people who all share our ambition for the town and are working incredibly hard behind the scenes to deliver and having delivered some of the things that you're going to see today. So an amazing team led by Donna. So we came into being first of April last year, a new town council constituting of the unparished area of Taunton, so central Taunton, and taking in some of the outer areas as well, so the Comitoe Parish, the Staple Grove Parish, and parts of Chedden FitzPayne as well, to create the new Town Council boundary. Split into a number of wards and represented by 20 councillors, lots of us are here this evening. If you're a town councillor, give people a wave, there they are, all sat amongst you. Nick, you didn't wave, you're a town councillor. And here's your, and hopefully you recognise where you are on that map. There's our lovely photos of each of us, so you can see who you recognise in the room, but an amazing team of 20 councillors, or 19 at the moment, we've got about to have an election for one, who want to make sure that we're delivering the best possible outcomes we can for our town. So we might not all be of the same political persuasion necessarily, but what we do all absolutely have in common is a desire to make Taunton an amazing place to live, work, and visit. That's what we're all sat around the table to do, and that's our primary focus. So what is our vision? So we want our county town, and we are the county town of Somerset. Let's not forget that, we are the county town of Somerset, and we want to make sure that we're vibrant, we're welcoming, and that we're always looking to the future. So our mission, as we've set out, is to help shape Taunton's future. That's what we're playing our role to do at the most local level of local government, to be your voice to help shape where Taunton goes in this future. That breaks down into five priorities, I'm going to talk very briefly about them. We've just delivered, or we've just published our corporate plan, which is a fancy way of saying our plan for the council and the things that we want to achieve. There are some copies of this on the table just at the back, so please help yourself if you'd like, if you'd like some bedtime reading to help you fall asleep. Help yourself to a corporate plan at the back. There's five key priorities that sit in this plan, I'll just talk very briefly about each of them. A prosperous town. So we want our town and our people to be prosperous, and to make sure that we're vibrant and we're diverse in what we're delivering as a county town. The environment is absolutely essential to delivering that, so making sure that we have a sustainable environment will enable us and actually be the lever for driving prosperity as well. So the environmental and ecological emergency is absolutely at the forefront of our mind in our decision-making. We want to make sure that our communities are engaged, so we want events like this, the mayor and the civic functions that we have, we want our people in our town to feel really engaged with what we're doing as a town council. We want to make sure we're not operating in a vacuum over here, but that we're real people who share the priorities that you share, and we want to make sure we're doing the things that you want to see us do. Culture is so, so important to our town. We have so many amazing cultural arts provisions around our town, I'm sure you've all experienced lots of them whilst you've been living in Taunton. They are absolutely crucial for making sure that our community remains engaged, make sure our towns prosper, prosperous, so we want to make sure that we're supporting our cultural sector the best possible way that we can. And we want to make sure that we're a council that delivers, so that we're doing the right things, following the right governance, being transparent, being open, and making sure that you know what we're doing, and that's our job to be a well-run council. We started with some of the numbers of Taunton, how Taunton's made up, some interesting things that we noticed that were interesting. It's around 60,000 people living in our area. There's some in here, so 20% of households have no car to access travel, just something that stood out, because that was really quite interesting, actually, about some of our priorities around the environment and sustainability and public transport, therefore. Employment statistics, really, really important, so we want to make sure we can do what we can to help drive some positive change in some of these things. So what are our responsibilities at the moment? So as I say, we were set up a year ago by the former district council, and we were given responsibility for broadly three core services. The first is a series of parks and open spaces, I'm sure you'll be familiar with them, there's screens around if you can't quite read the detail on the slide, so 14 parks, 12 of which have children's play areas sat within them, so we're going to have responsibility for those. Eight different allotment sites, so our amazing allotment associations who run those sites were now responsible for making sure that they're kept happy and the allotment keepers are kept happy. And the one that fills most of our inboxes most of the time, and we know, we know need sorting out, are public toilets. It's the one that I know that people get most frustrated about, we get most frustrated about, and we are going to make our public toilets better, there you go, that's a slogan for you. Absolutely a key focus, so we know they're not good enough, we've got responsibility for seven of them in the town, across the town at the moment, it's a key ambition of ours to make sure that they are improved, refurbished, redeveloped, and made usable for the population. One of the things we've been able to do over the past 12 months is to meet a huge number of amazing organisations and people who are doing just incredible things across the town. I'm sure you'll know some of the names that are on the screen here, and we, one of the first things we set out was a grant and sponsorship pot, so the ability to give funds to some of these groups. My view, and lots of my fellow councillors' view, is that if there are already people in our community doing amazing things, let's not try and reinvent the wheel as a council, let's help facilitate those people to keep doing what they're doing and to do more of it. That's what our role should be, we don't need to do everything ourselves, we can help people continue to do the things that they are brilliant at. And there's a really good flavour here across all sorts of different things, so whether that's events, whether that's culture, whether it's public transport, whether it's sports, and this, I know that there's way more than this that will get engaged with us over the next few years, and we've grown our grant and sponsorship pot for next year, because this has just been so, so essential for delivering against our ambitions that we've set out for the town. So I'm going to do a quick whistle-stop tour of the past 10, 11 months of just how that went by month by month, and I will try to not make this as dry as it could be. So April 2023, we came to being on the first, we opened our first office, so we've now got a home in the Dean House, some of you may well know, and a small team of officers were set up, three or four officers to start with, so that three or four, three members of staff to start with a year ago. In May, we had our first elections, so elected our 20 town councillors, and two days later we had the coronation events, so we really were off to a flying start, and that was our first key opportunity to be in front, out in front of you guys, the public, which was amazing, and our mayor making as well. In June, we declared a climate and ecological emergency, we adopted our new logo, so the Peacock, which some of you may have seen around, that's our new logo now that we're adopting for the Town Council activities, and the mayor has started off very busy, and you'll see him feature throughout. So we had our Armed Forces Day flag raising, and we employed our town warden, who I think is here somewhere, where's our town warden? Right at the back, so Paul, we employed our first town warden, so you may see, well see Paul, and he's now joined by Ash, Ash, give us a wave, hello Ash, who will be heading around the town in our electric van, making sure that things are kept neat, tidy, and up to spec really, and up to scratch, so you can get a sense there of some of the things that they've been up to, look at what the number one problem is, and there we go, hence my earlier point. July, so we've got amazing parks in Taunton, amazing parks, and lots of them are engaged by amazing friends groups who look after them, and we would like to get the green flag status across three of them again, so Victoria, Frenchway, and Comitoe, so if anyone says from those groups, thank you for all that you do, because we're delighted to get that status. August, more community outreach, so a Taunton Flower Show where we were present, we launched our very glamorous public toilet working group, hey. Not one to put on your CV, or maybe it is, I don't know, I think it might be, no, a really important group though, that's up and running and have done amazing work so far, and we've had the really important VE Day commemorations as well, which our civic role is essential in. September, we said that we'd be a town of sanctuary, really important, so that was a really clear setting out that we were a town that would be open and welcoming to anyone and everyone in our society. We had another flag raising ceremony through our emergency services. Mr Mayor took part and started the 10K road race, they're not the actual chains he's wearing there, he's good, but he's not that good, and they're way too expensive for him to run a 10K racing, but he did start that, and now I think they're on a t-shirt, amazing. And we selected our Peacock colouring competition winners, and I think there's a flavour of some of the colour Peacocks as well at the back, and we announced Charis, the mayor chose Charis as his charity for the year. In October, we delivered the first Peacock post, which is our newsletter to residents, of course the newsletter, to keep people up to date with what's happening and to keep make sure that people are informed about what the Town Council is doing and delivering. Another really important issue that lots of people have been in touch about is the Goodlands Glen Bridge, I know people are really passionate about that, wanting to see that solved and not left as it is, so we've got feasibility study out at the moment, we're working through the outcome of that, hoping we can do something with that bridge, and we had Taunton Carnival as well, and another amazing event. There's a QR code, you can sign up to the Peacock post on our website if you want it in your inbox each quarter, Laura would be delighted to have more people to send it to, so please do head to our website and sign up if you're interested. In November, we adopted our Service Growth and Improvement Plan, so in normal people language, that means the things that we wanted to see improved around the town this year, and some of those have been undertaken across our parks and across the town centre. We had the really, really important Remembrance Commemorations, and it was our first year, obviously as we were new, being responsible for those commemorations. Jo, who can't be here this evening, is the absolute trooper who sits behind all of that work, and is absolutely amazing, we're so lucky to have her experience on the civic side of things, and they ran really smoothly, which, given it was our first time running it in the county town, we felt a lot of pressure and to make sure that we did a good job of it, and I'm really pleased to say that, I feel that we did for the town. And we signed the Armed Forces Covenant as well, also. And we had the Christmas light switch on as well, so another member of the team, we've got Craig here, who was the, lots of the brains behind the Christmas lights that we had this year, and we're looking to expand our Christmas light offering next year as well, so the Town Council will now be responsible for that each year. We're heading there. December, we had the new tennis courts open up at Taunton Green, an amazing new facility that I hope will be really popular as the weather gets a bit better, we had a brilliant carols around the bandstand, thousands of people came up for that, an amazing event, so thank you to everyone who turned up, and the mayor had some important visits to do to our emergency services and sold some food bank as well. January, January is budget month, and we agreed our budget for the next year in January. A really difficult decision this year for us, setting our budget, being new, I'm sure it hasn't escaped the attention of many of you that we are increasing the amount we're asking people to pay towards their Town Council next year, and we had to make a really tricky decision as a council to do that, the decision that we were ultimately facing was one of not doing that and losing really important services, or asking people to pay more so that we can protect and improve the services that we really care about in our town. So the budget process was really, really thoughtful, really, really difficult, and we're now in line with all of the other larger towns across Somerset, so personally I think we've got to a good outcome, and I want to make sure that you guys see the benefit of that budget that we've set. There are a couple of other bits, there, the corporate plan I've mentioned, and the pop-up shop as well, so we launched a consultation on our pop-up shop idea where we could bring small makers and people into a space where they could try running a trading stall, a shop before taking out their own unit, so we've run a consultation on that, we're just looking through the responses, I think a report's coming to our council meeting next week on that one. And in February, so last month, we made the big decision to take on and preserve three what we saw as really important services in our town, which our budget that we'd set has enabled us to do, so namely our CCTV across the town, 57 cameras in total that we've now been able to fund and keep operational 24/7, 365 days a year. The locking of Fiverr Park every evening, and the clear-out and make sure that people are out of the park and that it's a safe space, so that's now going to be maintained, and the visitor information centre as well, a really important service, because it's called a visitor information centre, but I've been in there numerous times, and I tell you, it's not just visitors who use that service, there's a lot of people in our town who benefit from that information centre, so we've made the decision to protect those three things for this year, and there may well be more services that come our way. So looking ahead, I'll pick out some of these, we've got our brilliant arts and culture strategy that's coming, I think, to council next week, so a big thank you to councillor Ellis, who's worked with lots of our arts organisations to pull that together, so thank you Caroline for that. We've got then the DA 80 commemorations, really important, we've got the Taunton Together event, our first big event that we're running as a town council, again with lots of partners, and lots of you are sat in this room at the end of September, so please keep that date free in your diary, it's going to be an amazing event for our town, we hope. The infamous public toilet working group are going to consider how to best target funds and how we're going to improve public toilets, that's coming. We've got some decisions to make around where our office is located and our depot that we provide, so that we set our town warden team who are going to grow, so we're going to go from about two town wardens to four, five, six town wardens over the next 12 months, to make sure they can continue delivering the services that we want to see. So we're going to go from about two town wardens to four, five, six town wardens over the next 12 months to make sure they can continue delivering the services that we want to see. Our parks, as I've mentioned, really, really important. One of the things that councillors very quickly made clear is that our parks don't contain enough functioning equipment and enough accessible equipment, truly accessible equipment. So those are the two things that we want to really make sure we're taking a view of and putting in place the right equipment that suits everyone in our communities. We've got a tree planting programme underway. Our civic twinning links are really important. During Covid, they really struggled for obvious reasons, but we want to make sure that we put some energy back into those and make sure those links are really strong. We've got an amazing team of officers who are growing and developing. And we want to make sure we're looking at important things like speeding around the town. That's another issue that people care about. So investing in some speed devices as well to make sure that we can monitor that. So that was a lot from me. That was a whistle stop tour of what we've done in the past 12 months. So I hope it gives you a good flavour of where we've been to. We always want to hear from you. Genuinely, we always want to hear. So please, if there's ever any idea, any question, anything you just want to float, please get in touch with us and myself, one of the teams, someone will engage you positively, see what we can do about that. But that's me. Back over to you, Mr Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Deacon. It was a very thorough report and sorry to see so many images of me. We next come to hearing from some of the recipients of our grants that we've given out this year. We have given grants out to 34 organisations. You're not going to hear from all 34 of them. We've just selected four who are going to come up and just tell us what they've been doing this year. The first person I'm going to invite up is Vicky Robbins from the Brew House. They were awarded a grant of £1,592 back in July. And so I'd like to invite Vicky to come up and just talk to us about what they've been doing.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Thank you. So good evening, everybody. I'm Vicky Robbins. I'm the executive director of Taunton Brew House Theatre and I'm accompanied this evening by my chair Val. It's quite an honour and a privilege to be asked to present this evening. So I'm kind of doing it on behalf of all of the cultural and creative institutions that have benefited from the grants from the town council in this last year. So we're all very, very grateful for the support. Why I've been picked to come and present, I have no idea. It's got nothing to do with theatre whatsoever, I think. But pure coincidence, we were the very first ever grant recipient. Again, more luck than judgment. I just happened to get in there first and they awarded us the grant. So I'm here to talk about that one in particular. So we applied for a small amount of money, well, a significant amount of money in the context to enable us to deliver some workshops and activities for families in our community through the autumn and the winter. We wanted to make these either free or very, very subsidised for people to be able to come and access creative opportunities where they might not otherwise be able to do so. We also wanted to make sure that we were promoting sustainability and using recycled materials wherever possible. And we wanted to work with other local artists and creatives in our area to provide them with the opportunities as well. So we held five different workshops over seven instances. And there's a few pictures here. There were workshops involving locally grown willow, cardboard tree and snowflake making, cardboard bird making, animal making and pop-up monster making. We had quite a few people come to these workshops. I'll get onto numbers in a minute. But all, I think two, four of those were completely free to any families that wanted to come and participate. And the other ones we reduced, we managed to reduce to three pounds where they would otherwise cost about £12 for a family to attend. Thank you. We also managed to create our Winter Wonderland exhibition in our gallery space, which was quite spectacular. And it was all produced using recycled or recyclable materials. Working with local cardboard manufacturer RH Fibre Board from Wellington, who cut out all these amazing Christmas trees for us. And we created a Father Christmas workshop and the man himself actually visited us for a period during December. And we had over 240 local family groups come and visit Father Christmas and experience that opportunity. So just to clarify, the entire project cost us just shy of £2,500. We match funded with our space and our staffing. We raised £154 in ticket income, which is next to nothing. And thanks to the Taunton Town Council grant of £1,592, we were able to reach 600 family groups during this project. And by a family group, that could be one adult, one child, or it could be two adults with four children. So we've never quite calculated how many people that actually did involve. But from the contribution that we were given by the town council, that cost the town council or that they basically that, that grant equated to £2.65 per family, which we thought was money extremely well spent. So we're very grateful. Thank you very much. I'll hand back to Mr Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Vicky. And it was just wonderful to hear of all that you've been doing and the active engagement that you've been providing for this town and drawing people in. So thank you very much. Next up, we have David Parkman. Now, David was the instrumental organiser behind our Armed Forces Day back in July, which attracted, I believe, over 30,000 people, which was an amazing achievement. And they're hoping to attract even more next year. They received a grant from the town council early last year in order to help run this. And I'd like to invite him up now to come and talk more about it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's David Parkman. I'm one of the team from Somerset Armed Forces Day. I got volunteered to do this evening, but some of my fellow committee members are here. So all the awkward questions, we will direct to them, please. So it's the wrong slide. That's too late. Okay. So they've got the wrong slides up. So don't worry. So we were very fortunate and very gratefully received £5,000 for Somerset Armed Forces Day. As most of you will know, it is not inexpensive to put on. We were delighted that we had a little over 31,000 visitors last year. And we expect that to grow this year. Not all at one time, by the way, just throughout the day. The fund was used predominantly to pay for facilities. So there are obviously some key facilities that we need to put on on the day, toilets, fencing, that kind of stuff. And the fund was predominantly used for that, that point. But also importantly, receiving the fund allowed us to achieve our goals for Somerset Armed Forces Day. So Somerset Armed Forces Day is a totally inclusive community event, which is free to attend and open for all. So it's fully inclusive. And we're quite proud to say to you that Somerset Armed Forces Day last year was the biggest Armed Forces Day in the country, only second to the national event. So we're delighted about that and we hope it will continue to grow in our county town. We're very proud of what we're doing. But what benefit, you may ask, does it bring to us? We estimate from last year's event, and it can only be an estimate because we don't know, you know, most traders won't share with us how much money they took. But we estimate, and we think it's a fairly conservative estimate, that Armed Forces Day 2023 generated over £300,000 for the local economy. So it's good spend, it's a good payback. And based on last year's figures, it works out at about 16 pence per individual. So quite efficient money, I think. So we're hoping to secure additional funding this year, which was outlined last year to keep us going. And as I've said, it will be slightly larger this time. We're expecting slightly more people. We're looking to increase the support from local businesses. We already have quite a few charities that come along, not just Armed Forces charities, but also wider charities looking after us. Marketing has increased this year. Some of you may have noticed. There is more activity on social media. We have our own website, which you're welcome to visit, which will have more information on it and more interactive opportunities for you to get involved. Town Council, the Taunton Town Council is fundamental to our success. Without their support, not only for us allowing us to use Fiverr Park in Wilton Lance, but also their funding, this event couldn't happen. Now, we're all a group of volunteers, giving up our free time to put on this event. We think it's a fantastic event and we're very proud of what's achieved so far. And we're hoping that we can grow that year on year to secure it for the future. And what we're hoping to do is support Taunton Town Council hosting the national event in the not too distant future. So I'll be happy to answer any questions later, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much, David. And thank you for the work that you've done in the committee and bringing such a wonderful event to our town every year. So we do look forward to it next year. Next up, I'd like to invite John Lewis. He's the secretary and director of the Taunton Carnival. As mayor, we become the honorary presidents and on the, one of the first meetings, he was outlining my role in the Taunton 10K. I don't think he had any idea that that the mayor was about to offer to run it. He looked quite shocked. And I think you were quite nervous on the day, weren't you? The last thing they wanted to do was lose a mayor on the fundraising event. But the Taunton Carnival Committee received a grant of £2,000 and they put on a wonderful show each year. And very delighted to introduce John, who will tell us what they've been up to this year.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, first of all, thank you for inviting me. And I represent the whole committee. When, when you get the title secretary, you end up doing all sorts of things that perhaps you would rather other people could do. I hope most of you in the room are familiar with Carnival. 2023 was the 56th annual procession since we restarted in 1966. And that was pretty much down to the mayor in that year, councillor Vic Ellis, who pulled all sorts of groups together to celebrate National Savings Centenary and Carnival was one of those and has continued. For some reason, we missed 2020 and 21. The route is from Tangier Way through the town centre, down over East Reach, where we, we break down. That means take apart, not anything else. In Critchard Way, which is named after Colin Critchard, who was secretary for nearly 30 years. And the event, with a few slides showing entries, attracts something like, we think, 15,000 people. We have floats, which are mounted entries, known as carts elsewhere in the county, but floats here. And, and walkers and they all take part in the whole procession. Right, a few, a few key facts about it. The South Somerset Federation of Carnivals is four towns in order of appearance, Wellington, Ilmister Chard and Taunton. And we have 10 competitive classes for mounted entries, the floats and for walkers. And I should have said just now that the photos were courtesy of Craig Stone. Thank you, Craig. There are also prizes for best locals and that would be now people or entries from within the town council boundary. There is only one full-blown carnival club in Taunton. And we would very much like to see more participants. There used to be loads and loads of clubs. Borough council had one, the county council had one, hospital had one, most of the big building firms in the town had one each. Very welcome to, to come back. And yes, it's a free show. It takes place on the public highway. There is no admittance fee. There is no spectator fee. We couldn't put it on without cooperation from lots of agencies, notably police, fire, ambulance, the other council and, and the town council. We all meet regularly during the year to organise all the safety aspects. And on the night, there's a multi-agency group that sits in the background, hoping not to have to do anything. And I've sat in there for 15 odd years. And we rarely have to do anything because it runs very smoothly. Like everybody else, everyone's a volunteer. That's the committee, the participants, the judges, the marshals, everybody. The nitty gritty. And it costs a lot to put on Carnival. And I suspect there are many people who don't realise the infrastructure cost behind it. Not least of all, public liability insurance, 1,300 quid. Our income is not what we would like it to be. We make some from fast foods, from trade entries, from a tombola and for this year, sorry, 2023, we had a programme which was very successful. We had a grant of 2,000 from the town council. And most of our money used to come from the collection. Now, the collection this year was just shy of £2,800, which with a crowd of 15,000 people, I make about £5 each. It isn't a free show, but most people think it is. And we, we had 60 odd collectors out and working hard. I know money is tight, but we would have hoped for a lot more than that. So without the town council's support, we would be in a little bit of trouble. We do raise money through other events during the year, the 10K being one of them. And we hope to engage a bit further with the business community in the coming year. The grant is much appreciated. And it is nice to be recognised as part of the council's arts and cultural strategy, which I joined very recently. Thank you, councillor Ellis. And, and that is Carnival. And that is where we are. And that is what we used your £2,000 for. And we may be talking to you about 2024 as well. I'm happy to answer any questions later as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, John. To say we've always enjoyed the carnival and always taken our son to see it. Finally, I would like to invite up Nick Harvey from In the Mix Project. This is a project I went to visit myself back in August and we, we gave them a grant of £2,500 this year and look forward to hearing how the year has gone for you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Obviously save the worst till last year, haven't we, to get me up here? Yes, so I, I'm the charity manager of a reasonably small organisation called In the Mix Project. We've been around now for just, just over about, about 12 years now. So we're, we're based in Waverley, we do some work right across Taunton Dean through a number of, of kind of different areas which are up on the screen there. And we're very lucky to be supported by the town council and some of the, the work that we do across sort of Taunton. So yeah, a little bit more information on us then. So we were sort of set up out of local authority budget cuts. We won't talk too much about those. In 2011. And so some of the rationale behind that was obviously to ensure that, that youth work remained a priority. It's nice to see that the town council are continuing that now with the youth grants that they've, they've just been working through actually this week, yesterday, to be precise. So yeah, that's why we've continued to do what we've, we've done in the local community. Youth work is a really important thing that we want to continue to champion. Uh, youth work is a really uh important thing uh that we want to continue to champion locally. Um, young people use youth work for for quite a variety of of reasons. And the piece of work that the town council supported specifically for us was around working with the more harder-to-reach young people um and doing some detached work, which I will talk about uh a little bit later on. Um, so it's it's a it's a vital service um that is is required for for young people and we're really proud to be supported by the town council to do that. Um, so some random photos of us for youth provision. Um, but yeah, it's a it's it's a it's a personal, personality-driven kind of piece of work, really. Um, and so some of these guys are out about in in North Taunton delivering some of this work. Um, so we work alongside um schools and uh other establishments, including town and parish councils um to deliver some of the stuff that we do. Um, and that is that's linked into some of the work that we've we've just done in North Taunton, because we've been working alongside uh Pearl and School, which would formerly been the Taunton Academy, um as well as other organisations. And it's so vital to have those established relationships with partners and to work with the likes of the town council uh to deliver what we do. Um, we wouldn't be able to do the work that we do without um the support of those organisations um to be able to deliver those sorts of activities you can see on the screen. Um, so kind of the work we do, we um we have a local catchment area, just to explain a little bit about how I'll set up, which encompasses Wellington, Taunton and Wyliskum. Um, and it goes out towards some rural parishes as well uh in West Somerset. Um, but we also do work right across the county. We have a a Young Leaders Programme, the detached work, which is some of the stuff we were doing here um and a number of other things there, uh some of which the the town council are working with us on at the moment. So, community delivery. Um, so our detached work in um Taunton, which uh we we kindly received a grant from to deliver some of that. Um, that included some outreach work into some of the colleges where we were able to chat with students about what their needs and aspirations were with regards to um how they perceive themselves and what they want to get out of the town as well. Um, so we we were running a a youth survey last year and some of that information has enabled us to feed back to the town council the sort of things that young people feel that they would require in the town, which is great. Um, this this specific piece of work we did, it's provided about 45 hours of of youth work over a period of time. Um, and we supported in the community around about 83 uh young people that we met whilst we were doing some street work. Um, the that number increases with those that we were working with in uh colleges and in schools. Um, we've also got some, hopefully some new work starting um in some other uh towns and villages around uh Taunton, around the area and in our catchment area, which is really, really good. Um, but what this has allowed us to do is is to build those uh to kind of increase the relationships and positive relationships we have with young people. Um, which has enabled us to decipher some of those things that they would like uh from the town and the things that they feel like they could do with getting out of town and also expand some of the work that we're hoping to be delivering in Taunton uh in the in this this coming year. Um, and so um, that's been a really positive thing. And some of the other activities we did over the summer as well, so this linked into some of our so summer holiday club provision. Um, and we had a number of uh young people who 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 came from Taunton to deliver that. Um, we we also have a a Young Leaders Group and they are involved in supporting the design and implementation of some of the work that we do. Um, so they have an opportunity to then spread their voice more and we've just recently, through some of this work, recruited a couple of Taunton members to that, which is fantastic. Uh, so young people from Taunton who are involved in in doing that as well. Um, and there is, I don't know if this will play, but this is kind of, I thought, rather than listen to me for go on endlessly, I thought I'd just show a little kind of recap of what we did last year. So hopefully if it presses, it will just show some bits of video of of some of the stuff that we did in 2023. Fingers crossed, otherwise it will be more of me rabbiting on. There we go. Um, yeah, so there we go. Uh, this is a number of uh some of the activities we did um last year, which did include some of the work in Taunton, as you can see in some of the images here um on the screen and some of the schools groups that we visited um last year, which we're looking forward to hopefully a repeat and bigger and better than all this stuff that you can see uh happening right now. Um, so some of this was the summer stuff that we did. Um, which was in part um linked to the the Taunton work and money we got from DCMS as well in support of the grant from the town council. Um, don't worry, this only goes on for about a minute, it's not hugely long. Um, but there we go, yeah. So some of the the different aspects to the work that we do there um throughout um an entire year, this gets us to Christmas and lots of mess. So there we go. Uh, thank you very much for the uh the support from the town council and I'll hand you back to Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Nick. Uh, well, that completes the presentations from four of our organisations. Um, and I think we felt it was important that we do uh get them on this annual meeting to present to you. Uh, they are spending public money, but I think we can tell by the applause that we've given them today that it's being spent well and it's actually being spent for the benefit of our community. And our community are receiving a lot from the work they're doing. So thank you to you four in particular for coming up and presenting. And thank you to the other 30 who have uh been given money and are using it for the benefit of us here in Taunton. So thank you. Uh, as a town council, we always aim to work with our partners as well. And one of those partners are the local policing team. And our our final report uh this evening, uh we've invited Chief Inspector Rebecca Wells-Cole. And if she's happy to come and report back and give us an update.
I don't have a fancy PowerPoint. I did have my name, I think might go up in a minute, but uh good evening, everyone. Becky Wells-Cole, I am the Chief Inspector for Somerset West Neighbourhoods. Uh, there, that's me. Um, so welcome to me. But thank you for having me. Seriously, I'm very honored to be here. I am asking myself, I didn't realise quite when I accepted this, that how big the room was, how many people I'd have to speak to. I'm used to kind of shouting at people and telling people what way to go, so if I revert to that, tell me off and get me back to what I need to talk about. So I am the local chief inspector for neighbourhoods. And I just wanted to touch briefly on that, the difference between that, because many people don't know. In policing, they have response policing, which is the teams that answer the 999 calls. So if you are in crisis or something terrible is going on, that's a different team. And my team are the neighbourhoods policing, the community policing. So we come and the main thing we look at is problem solving. So we look at problems within the community and help to try and solve them with our communities. But we also importantly work with the uh town council. Um, and Taunton Town Council were very excited because we've not had a town council before, so it's very exciting for us uh here. So my area actually covers a whole of Somerset West, uh which is uh Cheddar, Burnham-on-Sea, Taunton, Wellington, right up to Minehead. And I must just say, I started my career in London, where I covered about this big an area. So when I came here about four years ago and a blue light run to Minehead was 45 minutes, I couldn't quite believe that. So it's been a bit of a learning curve for me, but I am from Taunton originally and very pleased to work here. And I'm from a um services upbringing, so it's very exciting to see lots of the good work ongoing. But I do feel a bit afroced because we had all these amazing things about toilets, um about crafting, armed forces, the amazing carnival, which we're always happy to please. And then on to the amazing charity work that goes on. So I'm a little bit fearful that my report won't be that interesting, but I just I don't have a big PowerPoint because I don't want to bore people with figures and things that we look at in policing. But I just wanted to talk to you about some of the priorities that my teams look at. Uh, for us here in Taunton, it's around the town town centre predominantly. Um, looking at antisocial behaviour, working with businesses and business crime. I know there's some businesses in the room, some of my teams have worked uh with you to try and reduce antisocial behaviour and some of the crimes that take place associated to business. Um, some of the other things that we focus on is what we call the night time economy. So that's crime and antisocial behaviour that is caused by people out socialising and drinking, which is fantastic for for the pubs and and that side of the economy. But we also pick up the side that's not so pleasant for people. Um, so the the predominant thing in Taunton is around the town centre, the antisocial behaviour. We also um work on the night time economy, as I said. And part of that is, you would have heard nationally, the focus on violence against women and girls. So that's a lot my teams focus on on that. And then as we move into the summer, our population in Somerset as a whole swells, so the demand on policing swells. So that's what we're sort of working towards at the moment, how we're going to respond as a policing team to that. So just to give you a kind of understanding, and I've had to write this down just so that I know what what my uh teams look like. So I have one inspector in Taunton, um a gentleman by the name of Michael Payne. Many of you who've been here for a while uh might know the old um inspector who's retiring, Mike Griffiths. He's just going, you might know him from the services as well, but Michael Payne is taking over. So same first name, just different surname. They have two sergeants here across two different teams, this is, may I add, seven constables and 15 PCSOs. So it's not a significant amount. We are under-resourced at the moment. Um, it's less than what we should have and I just highlight that because the demand on us is ever increasing. But we have had a commitment from our chief officer group that we will get more resources into neighbourhood policing. And I'm sure with a general election looming, you may have seen that one party promises that they will invest in neighbourhood policing, but who knows, we will see. So that that's just the areas that we work on locally. What I would say is recently, um, there's been some tragic events in Bristol and that does take our resources. We do have to move around. Um, whilst it hasn't affected us here in Taunton, thankfully. You know, we've taken learning from that and and knife crime is a really dangerous and and worrying trend for everybody. We have what's called an early intervention team who my teams work closely with um who go into schools and work with young people. Um, and that's sort of our area of focus down here in Somerset. And and that's really just a very short whistle-stop tour of what we're doing, what we're working on. Um, but we do so, so much more. Um, things like, I heard we were talking about speeding earlier. We support community speed watch um and things like that. We work in, we go into schools. We do engagement with our communities. The list is never-ending really, and we are sort of keen and willing to get involved and I'm happy to take any questions. Um, I've just put our website up here because if you want to know who your staff are and where you live, it's useful to go and you can put a name to a face on there. Um, but yeah, I'm happy to take any questions at the end of when we're taking questions, which I think is in a minute, isn't it?
Uh, thank you very much, Inspector Wells-Cole. Uh, yes, uh, there will be an opportunity to ask questions and some of the uh grant award recipients have also said if you want to ask questions. Uh, but there will be time at the end for that, so if you want to, if you have a question, please just park it at the back of your mind for the moment. Uh, our next section is moving on to our civic awards. This is the celebratory part of our evening. And it's an opportunity for us to recognise uh the work and some of the achievements and some of the contributions that have been made by individuals and groups within Taunton for the benefit of all the community. So I'd like to invite councillor Tom Deacon back up to
Thank you.
the podium. And he's going to read out the nominees and the awards. And then when he's read your name out, if you'd like to please come up to the front, I will hand you your certificate and then we shall just go to one side and have a photograph. So I can switch this off, can't I?
You can. Brilliant. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So it's just to say that photographs um will be used for um social media and in the press. If you would rather that wasn't the case of any photographs, please let Laura know, who's right at the back of the room. Laura, give us a wave. Um, and we'll make sure that your photos aren't included if you if you'd rather than not. Um, if you don't hear from you, then we'll we'll include them. Uh, wonderful. Right, let's get going then. So the first certificate uh is for Mervyn Roberts. And that's in recognition of his support and dedication to the setup of St George's Wilton Community Fringe. Congratulations, Mervyn. Okay, uh, next up, we have the Friends of Comitere Pond. Um, and that's in recognition of their engagement with residents and the council to regenerate the pond and surrounding green space. Okay, so next up, we have To Be U Somerset, and that's in recognition for their support of LGBTQ plus young people and their families. Okay, next up, we have Mary Orico, and that's for in recognition of her service to the Howcome community. Okay, we've got the Appleton East family, and that's in recognition for their contribution to the community through the Friends of French Weir Park. Next up is Go Create Taunton CIC, and that's in recognition for their dedication and commitment to inclusive arts and culture in Taunton. Next up is Roger and Theresa Ashelford, and that's for their outstanding contribution to the Friends of Comitere Park. Next up is Susie Thomas, in recognition of her outstanding contribution to the promotion of Taunton's independent businesses through Taunton Independent Quarter. Next up is the head teacher and staff at Prieswood Primary School, in recognition of the efforts made by staff over the last year in achieving a significantly improved Ofsted report. report. Next we have Helen Laurie and that's in recognition of her service to the community through the Friends of Long Run Meadow. We'll take you, congratulations. We'll take you to the mayor because he's got court chatting. Mr Mayor, come on. Next we have Creative Innovation Centre, CIC or KICKKICK, in recognition of their contribution to the creative and social wellbeing of Taunton. Next we have the Taunton Sea Cadets and Royal Marine Cadets in recognition for their outstanding support to the community and to the mayoralty. We now have some recipients who unfortunately weren't able to be here this evening, but I'll still read their names and citations so that we can give them a round of applause as well. So first we have David Northey in recognition of his work to promote and ensure public transport is protected and improved across the town through Travel Watch South West. So well done, David. To Roger and Marilyn House for their outstanding contribution to Victoria Park Action Group and to the Taunton Carnival Committee. To Fiona Wilson for her longstanding commitment and voluntary support to the Taunton Dean Blades fencing community. And finally to Jamie Hill in recognition for his service to the community through Taunton's Long Run Meadow Park Run. So we'll make sure all of those recipients receive a certificate from the mayor at a future date.
Love, am I on? Yes, so lovely, thank you ever so much. And this will be an annual event. It might not always be in the town annual meeting. We might, like some other parish and town councils do, try and move our civic award ceremony and have it as a separate event. But we felt it was very important in the very first year of the town council that we did at least start the tradition of honouring some of our residents here who work tirelessly behind the scenes and contribute to our community. We now move into our final section of the evening. You'll be pleased to hear that how long it lasts is entirely up to you and how many questions you want to ask. But as Rebecca said, she's happy to take questions. Tom, councillor Tom Deacon is also happy to take any questions. And of course, the awards recipients, the people who came to present have also said they'd be happy to take any questions. At this point, I won't be answering any of them. So I'm going to make that quite clear now. So we do have, I believe, some questions that have already been submitted. And who's, you're happy to, yes. So I'm going to hand over to, we didn't introduce actually our deputy clerk, Marcus. Marcus Burns, please stand up, take a bow. And he works tirelessly with Donna. And.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. So first on the list is Mr Martin Pakes, is he here?
There's a microphone coming on its way to you.
Thank you. Actually, most of the queries I had were actually answered by councillor Deacon in the very full report here as well. My questions relate to the town centre. It worries me that like every other town centre in this country, it's going to face serious challenges in the future. And what worries me about Taunton in particular is the fact that it is beginning to look a bit tatty. And I think that's going to be one of the disadvantages in the future because it's not going to be a town centre where you're going to buy a tin of paint or toilet rolls. It's going to be a place where you do some leisure shopping. It's going to be very similar, I think, to something like Clark's Village. In other words, you go there for an experience, you buy something, you spend half a day there and you actually eat there as well. Now, you have town wardens, which is very good, but I'm wondering if this sort of status should be raised a bit. And we should call them, or one of them at least, a town centre manager. Now, I think there are people who are old enough in this hall to remember Woolworths in the days in the 50s and 60s, where you actually had a proper shop floor manager, who was a person in a suit, who walked around the shop and made sure absolutely everything was right. And I think that's the sort of person that we need in this town centre, who can go around and actually cajole traders and others to actually look after their premises and do things properly and can be a point of contact. And I think the town council can be an honest broker in this situation because it won't have much money, it won't have much of our staff resources and it can do little things. I mean, I am fed up with seeing all the sort of plastic ties that attach the lamp posts to fly tipping. That's not in your programme here, but that's some small thing you can do, which could actually increase your credibility. And then you can actually go to others to say, we're doing this, why don't you do that? So my question is, have you considered appointing a town centre manager?
Well, thank you, Mr Pakes, for your question. I share lots of your observations about where town centres are heading. I think experience driven shopping and leisure shopping, as you describe it, I think absolutely is the way to go. I think, and we see lots of the retailers have struggled in the town centre across the country, are those who I think have forgot the importance of the experience of shopping and what it feels like to walk into a shop, especially now when we've got digital commerce that's so effective at getting people to buy things. We have to go back to experience. And what I would say, in defence of our town a little bit, is I think we've got some amazing businesses in our town centre and particularly independent businesses. We've got an amazing opportunity there to really, I think, plant our flag, go actually we want to be the home of those kinds of businesses that see people come through, take units, independent, homegrown. And that's what inspired part of our pop up shop work, actually, is to start to help harness some of that activity. So I'd say in defence slightly about that, I think actually we're in, there's much to be improved. I think there's a lot to be proud of. When I visit my family back in Cornwall, I can tell you, Taunton Town Centre is far, far better than lots of the town centres I see when I'm down in Cornwall. But I think you're right about the town centre and making it look tip top. And I think that's the key bit there. A town centre manager, yeah, I mean, it's a role we can absolutely look at exploring. I think the role of the town wardens, I think you're right in that. Our operations manager, Craig, he was a town centre manager, he's got that experience. So we've got people in the team who have done similar roles, but I'll take your suggestion on board. We're now building our staffing structure for next year and I think we'll take that seriously. But I'm agreeing with everything you've said about the how we preserve, enhance and improve our town centres because it's so important to the prosperous town ambition that we've got. Thank you, Mr Pakes.
Thank you. Next up we have Carol and Ken Wright, are they here?
Talking of the town centre, I wonder what the extent of town council involvement is in the Firepool development and the next planned stages.
So Firepool Development, a big regeneration project for our town and really, really important. The first thing I'll say is it's a Somerset Council led project. It's not a Somerset Council led project, so there's only so much we can do to influence it. Having said that, and I'm sure you're all aware of the financial challenges of Somerset Council, the funding for the project at the moment is ring fenced, it's a separate pot of money, so that regeneration, we're hoping we'll be able to continue through Somerset Council. Our role as a town council, I think, in that, in that kind of moving forward with it, is to be a really clear voice of the people of Taunton in how those plans are moved forward. So we will have a say through our planning development committee, we'll have a voice in that, in how that shapes. And actually, we haven't got any concrete plans, but we're not against, and we might explore whether there's a part of the site that the town council might want to take on for ourselves and start to do something with. So I think we're open minded about what the future of Firepool could look like. I know that there's a tender that's soon to be going out about the southern part of the boulevard, so things are moving from a Somerset Council point of view. But we stand willing and ready to work with our partners at Somerset Council to make sure that the Firepool regeneration is the best it can be and that it delivers for people in the town. I think that's the key bit, it's got to deliver something of value for the people who live here.
That's good news that it's ring fenced, but we've had enough public consultations over many years about Firepool, we just need to get on with it.
Yeah, I quite agree. And I think it's nice to see that there are things happening. So I think you start to see the shape of the land is now, is now happening, but you like me want to see it built, it sourceded and that we can actually start to enjoy this space. Agreed.
Thank you. Next, Mr Peter Burgoyne. Mr Peter Burgoyne, no. Okay, I'm happy to read out the question on his behalf. Has consideration been given to restricting vehicle traffic in the town centre to 20 miles per hour? Bristol, Exeter and smaller west country towns have adopted this. It would make the pedestrian shopping experience safer and much more enjoyable.
It's a really good question. So in principle, 20 mile an hour zone, yes, absolutely in favour, absolutely. They're so, so important for our communities. I think we've seen success of not only 20 miles an hour, but also restricting what vehicles can move within town centres and other places. So not just a free fare for anyone, but actually restrictions, whether it's public transport only or if public transport on access only. There's some interesting models for us to look at. But I think in principle, yeah, as a town council, we're in favour of 20 miles an hour limits where appropriate. And actually, we will be engaging, it's Somerset Council who need to put that in place, but we want to engage positively with them to put forward areas where we think in the town 20 miles an hour would be sensible.
Good, thank you. Next up is a comment from Mr Alan Cavill.
Yes, just a quick comment. On behalf of the allotment holders of Taunton, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff and the councillors in particular for taking on the role, this great tradition that we have in Taunton of self-management. We are one of the biggest communities of its size, this town, as a town council as it is now, to continue that tradition of self-managed. Many of our sites in Taunton, the ones that you've seen, they're now the responsibility of the new county council, have been going on for more than 100 years and all of them are run by the tenants and by the community. That is a unique position that we find ourselves in. I've volunteered with the national allotment movement for 22 years now, created some 70 new sites and Taunton has been the model for all of those sites in the west of England. So a big thank you to the new town council.
Thank you very much, Alan. We do have another question from Brenda Prentis. Is Brenda here? Yep, do you like to ask your question?
Thank you for giving me a moment. As you know, I've been trying to help the town council to resolve a couple of challenges that we have, that being first, the closed footpath from Goodlands Gardens over the River Tone. And secondly, the closed footpath that runs from Bridge Street down the side of the old Pound Stretches. And having suggested a few ideas that may or may not work out, including, I think I gave you a two page list of grants that might pay for historic restructurings and so on. I was reading in the local paper recently about the active travel that is, I'm not quite sure how I describe it. Active travel, I've found very elusive to find out who it is, what it is, where it resides and who peoples it. However, it would appear that they have unspent active travel money and they want to put a path from the station down to Ivory Park. So I have suggested that when they've finished their boulevard coming down from the station to the river, perhaps they'd like to come across the river in front of the Brew House, over Bridge Street, down the side of the path that is now closed at the moment, then over the bridge, which they'll have to repair, which will then take them on through by the museum, by Somerset Square, by the old grammar school, pass that on to the old library into Bath Place, all of which I think would be a good route to show off Taunton and what heritage we've got left on its way up High Street to Ivory Park. In that way, we might actually get funded, the repair of the bridge and the path opened that everybody would like to see. Thank you.
Brenda, thank you. Thank you for your question this evening and thank you for your months of work that's gone into this in the background and the research that you've done. It's incredible, so thank you for continuing to push on it. We all agree with you about particularly the path and the bridge, so the Pound Stretcher and the bridge, the Goodlands Gardens Bridge, I mentioned that in my presentation earlier, we want to look for ways we might be able to solve the bridge. The path, as you know, is complex, private ownership combined with public rights of way. I mean, it's difficult to understand who can do what with that space. And I know that you're campaigning to make sure that it is clear that it's a public right of way and we can do something. I know that you've been in touch with Marcus and the team on a few occasions on this and I know they've picked up your suggestions to push forward. And I saw today that you've contacted Somerset Council about their active travel fund. So I think that's an intriguing proposition. I don't quite know what their response will be, but I think we await with face of breath and see whether there is something we could do with that funding. Well, I can assure you that the leader of the council himself picked it up today at Somerset Council. Ah, well, there we go. So you're hustling the right people. So I'm sure you'll get a response to that as of racing. But thank you, Brenda.
Okay, we have another question from Mark Johnston. Is Mark Johnston here? Did he submit?
I can read it out on his behalf, Mr Mayor. I've just seen the proposed charges for council tax in Taunton for the year and it has increased by 12.5% again this year. A bandee property in Taunton will pay approximately £300 per annum more than the same band of property in, say, Stoke St Mary or Bradford in Tone. Taunton is about the third highest in Somerset according to the SCC list. How can you justify this difference?
So if I talk about, I think there's two parts to that. That's why we've taken decisions we have in Taunton and then why that's slightly different to other neighbouring, smaller villages and parishes. In Taunton, I think I touched on the presentation earlier, the choice facing us was to do nothing and see local services fail or to do something and be able to protect and improve and continue to fund important grants to provide the services, to improve them and to deliver for people. And to put ourselves in a similar space to other larger towns. So I think we've done the right thing when it comes to that. In terms of neighbouring areas, I think the fundamental point is that council tax isn't the right tax to be using for any of these things. The whole thing is broken, local government funding is broken. And the reason why people in the villages don't pay as much as people in the towns is because the towns are where all the services sit, or vast majority. So the public toilets are in the towns, the most parks are in the towns and they might get used by people on the outside, but because they don't live in the area where those things are, they don't have to pay for them. And I think there's an inequality there. I don't, I don't think that's right, I don't think that's fair, but we can only influence what we can do. that's fair, but we can only influence what we can do in Taunton for the people who live here. And what we're trying to make happen nationally is that the whole problem with local government funding is solved, because for too long, our public services have been underfunded, and we're seeing the knock-on impact of that at all levels.
We have another question from Neil Gaskin. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Good evening. I'd like to ask what steps councillors propose to take in conjunction with Somerset Council to ensure that food refuse, largely from shops and businesses in the town centre, is not left out in plastic sacks waiting for collection, apparently for hours, giving gulls, rats, another inhabitants of our town centre ample opportunity to rip the sacks to bits, food and rubbish everywhere on the pavements. A gentleman was talking earlier about the state of the town centre. It's not a good site, it does not look good, and it's a health hazard. So I'd really like to hear what you were going to do about it.
Okay, well, thank you for your question. I was in reference as well, I think it's a similar point earlier about how we improve the town centre. I think it's a really valid point, quite a specific one, that will go away and we'll pick up with Somerset Council and maybe with our colleagues at the chamber as well, possibly. Just to pick that up, I think there's probably a couple of things there. There's one, which is why are bins being left for so long that it means that then that incident is even occurring? There's clearly something wrong there about the collection, so you need to solve that. And there's probably also an education piece as well for local businesses, that we can help them with that and understanding the impact of leaving their rubbish out on the site. And actually, that then has a cost impact of cleaning that up, it has a detrimental impact in the environment in which the shop is placed. So I think there's probably a broader education piece as well that we will look to work with our partners in local business and with Somerset Council. So I don't think we have the solution ourselves, our town wardens can help with some of the clean-up, but actually I think we need to prevent the issue occurring in the first place, rather than keeping paying to clean it up.
A lot of the time it's actually residents that live in the town centre who are visiting the town with an education element there. Somerset Council have been really good with providing extra bins for the businesses' waste and the residents, but they still don't do the recycling correctly. And most businesses use, you know, private waste disposal, so I do think it is the majority of residents who live in the town, certainly isn't St James Street.
Okay, that's helpful context, thank you.
Lovely, thank you. We have one more submitted question, and that's from David Northee, who's not here, so Marcus is going to read it out.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is from Mr David Northee. I'd like to place on record my thanks for all the work being undertaken by Taunton Town Council and Act 2K Theatre and the Somerset Bus Partnership, appreciated the help the council has given these two groups.
Right, that brings us to the end of the questions that were submitted before the meeting, so I can now open up to the floor, to all those present here. I feel they're going to sound a little bit like Fiona Booze here, and yes, the gentleman in the dark blue jumper.
Good evening. Brian Larkham. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you guys on putting together your first annual meeting as a fledgling council. It's gone remarkably well, and I'd also like to say how well those presentations were given by the grant recipients and the members of the community in the way that they've responded to this very first year as a new council, and I think that was brilliant. Okay, I haven't got one question, I've got a number of points, and I think they all relate back to the position that Taunton Council finds itself in, and it's a relationship thing, I guess, in the main. Now, Taunton Town Council was created on the back and as a consequence of Somerset becoming a unitary. So the county authority in doing that, I believe, put an obligation on themselves and a commitment to creating support for a new fledgling town council. And it seems to me that the situation facing Taunton Town Council is unsustainable on pre-set alone. So one point I'd like to ask is, and I appreciate you don't have the answers tonight, but it may be a marker that you can put down. What is the progress being made to try and work with Somerset Council to develop some sort of income generating asset transfers to the town council, because the preset is not enough? Secondly, given that we've got this very difficult position in finances, and I agree with the points made earlier about local government finances being broken, they are. If the model doesn't work, it needs looking at. But in that respect, you guys, some of you guys are double hatters, if I can put it that way, and I'd like to know and be assured that when you go to Somerset Council, you're going in the interest of the town council in the first instance. And I know you might say, well, you can go with both hats on, but it is a bit binary when you're coming to negotiations. The second thing is, or second point rather, is the point made earlier about the town centre. The town centre could be improved at very little cost, it's small things, I agree with the point made earlier, very small things. Some of us can remember the parade as it used to be. Try and recreate the parade, because it was a feature of the town centre, but we lost that along the way somewhere, and it's the small points of detail, again, as was made earlier, that could make a difference. Coming back to the bigger things, Taunton's had a huge growth in housing, and their obligations set down through 106 arrangements with the planning authority of the day, which was Taunton Dean District Council. Now, I'd like to know, in particular the Comitro Orchard Development, in the 106 agreements there was provisions put down for a GP surgery, a shopping precinct, allotments, sports fields, open space, major open space. So exactly where is that progress with those things, and more importantly, who owns it? Now, my view is, the planning authority owns it at Somerset, because they inherited the obligations laid down as the previous planning authority. But I'd like to know when we're going to see some physical deliveries on those obligations, because it's getting to a critical point in some of these big developments. And in tune with that, we had a sign-up and a money's received to be a garden town status. I'd like to see where the signs of that garden town influence is becoming evident in some of these big developments, because I'm not seeing it. All I'm seeing is dense developments, I'm not seeing these garden town initiatives being brought in. So again, when do we like to see real progress with that kind of initiative? And finally, I do recognise the difficulty in the finances, I said earlier. But at the end of the day, Taunton is still currently the county town, but there's a feeling that it's beginning to lag behind other places, just up the M5. And I think, to be honest with you, there is so much heritage, so much going on for Taunton, and I firmly believe that Taunton has huge potential. Its location in the south-west, it's the gateway to the south-west, it's surrounded by beautiful countryside, it's got everything going for it, it just needs, as I bring back to my original point, the right relationship struck with the county or unitary authority. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian. That was a comprehensive set of questions, and Tom has been making notes. I shall hand over to Tom.
Thank you, Brian. Wow. No, I'll send you a written reply to all of them. No, no, that's the cop-out. I'll touch on them briefly, but I don't have all of the answers, I'll make a preface for that. I don't have all the answers to those questions that you've asked, I'm sorry. We've been around just over a year, I will do my best, but I don't have all of the answers for you. Income generation, it's a fair point on generating income. Yes, absolutely, we should look at whatever ways we can to bring in additional finance into the council, whether that be through income, through running activities that bring in income, or actually seeking out grant funding from external grant providers, which we can do as a town council, that you can bring in income in different ways. And actually, we're starting to do that on things like the public toilets, so we need to put a bit of funding in ourselves, so then match fund and find other grant funding. So yes, we're looking at bringing in income. It's a really difficult balance we've got at the moment, because if we try and do too much too quickly, we'll get it all wrong. So that's the biggest problem that we have facing us. So what we need to do is focus on doing some things brilliantly and grow from there. And I think we're giving ourselves the tools at the moment to do some things brilliantly, and that's what we're going to work on over the next few months. And then I think we start to look at what some of the more peripheral things that we could do are. I think it's a timing thing as well, but I agree with the principle. Let me work through this, Brian, because I know there might be other people who've got questions as well.
This council, as a fledgling council, needs a permanent home. Now, you're currently a tenant renting in Dean House, that may not last forever. So when you strike up these relationships with the principal authority, can you please pursue a home that I think Somerset owe you? Because your coming is the consequence of the unitary being created and the town council that followed. Let them give you the municipal hall, you undertake to maintain it, that's the centre for the office, that's your home, this is the kind of thing you've got to get to. And when you talk about peripheral, the things I talked about in respect to the planning obligations, that's more than peripheral.
I've not got to planning yet. Thank you, Brian. So thank you, Brian. On the old municipal building, I don't know what will happen there. I think what we've got to bear in mind, though, is the trade-off of taking on a Grade Two listed building, and the costs that taking that building on will incur for us as a town council. And if that cost far outweighs the rent that we're currently spending on an office, that's not good value for money. So what we've got to do is make financially the right choices that deliver value for money, but make sure that we can provide for the longevity. So I think there's a balance there, not ruling anything out, but I think we just need to think about it in the rounds. In terms of some of your other questions, yeah, I'm a twin-hatter. Yeah, I sit on both Somerset Council and Taunton Town Council. I hope all of you have got a sense from me this evening that my passion is about making Taunton amazing, that's what I'm here for. And actually, on Somerset Council, I represent Taunton North, I represent the Taunton area. So my starting point is always to make Taunton amazing, and also to make sure we're looking out for our wider county. I don't think those two things do sit independently, actually. I think you can do both, I think you can want to make sure your town is amazing, the area that you live, that you've chosen to settle in, and make sure that people around Somerset also make sure that they get a good deal. I don't think that's unreasonable, and I feel like I've got the ability and our other twin-hatters do, to look at both ways. In terms of Comitro Orchard Grove and Planning Authority, Somerset Council are the Planning Authority. So any Section 106 agreement, anything like that, sits with Somerset Council. We are not a planning authority at Taunton Town Council. We are consulted, we have a say on planning, but it's not constitutional. So Somerset Council are the ones who are responsible for planning and enacting that. The same is true of the Garden Town. So we have a say on the Garden Town and where that's heading, it's a Somerset Council initiative, not Taunton Town Council. So there's only so much we can do, we want to have more of a say on some of these things, and I'm sorry to repeat it again, but it's been a year, so we're doing our best in growing, but we can't do everything at once. But I know that that development is so, so important, and I will go and find out what the latest is. I know some of our councillors will have more detail and get back to you on written ads on that. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, thank you very much, Tom. Yes, lady.
Well, so I can comment on the Digital Innovation Centre, which is soon to be reran as the Firepool Innovation Centre, which actually is quite positive, because it does broaden out the different innovation organisations that can be in there. By calling it digital, you actually constrain yourself, so I think it's a positive move. I know that there have been some soft events run in there to test the venue out, and I know that there are two or three really top innovative companies, so it can't just be any company that moves in there, they have to come with certain attributes if you want it to be a truly innovative centre. So I was assured today, because I knew the question was coming, to go and find out what's happening, and I'm sure that there are things happening, and we'll see movement there soon. But I know it's frustrating.
Lovely, thank you. Yes, gentlemen.
Thank you. My name's Alan Paul. First of all, I would like to congratulate you, as others have done, I think, about the fact that you've taken a very big risk. You've shown a lot of courage in having a very large percentage increase in a very small sum, which I think frightens some people, but you have enabled saving services in our county town, which otherwise, I think, would have certainly been cut, because, as I suspect we all know, two-thirds of our council tax is now swallowed up by having to pay for demand-led social services, which is, you know, you've talked about the system being broken, and that is a prime reason for the national system going wrong. So congratulations on that. My question is, in devolved services, could you consider the possibility of working with county highways to take a particular interest in the problems of parking and running in the... You know, Taunton is a doughnut, the hole in the centre is the town centre, the suburban ring around that centre part of the doughnut always has suffered a lot from parking problems in the area where I come from, Comitro, it's largely the hospital, but quite a lot of other areas too. And I would like to feel that with county highways being so stretched, that Taunton Town Council might take a particular interest in working with officers on resident parking schemes, consulting local residents about their needs, and trying to get a positive parking strategy going that involves local people and meets their needs.
Thank you, Alan, for the question and for your words at the start. Yeah, highways is a tricky one, because as you rightly say, it is the principal responsibility of Somerset Council. We know the financial challenges that they're facing and will continue to face over the coming years. This isn't a one-year thing, unfortunately. This is until the system is sorted, this is a perpetual problem that will exist in local government across the country, by the way, it's not just in Somerset, but across the country. At the moment, highway services are protected. The challenge we've got is that lots of the things aren't statutory, so they don't legally need to be required. And ultimately, councils and upstate authorities are going to have to rely or only deliver the things that they legally need to. So that's why we stood in and stepped up and saved some of those services you referenced, so CCTV and things like that, because they're not statutory, they don't legally need to be operated. So highways specifically, I think in principle, yes, we would love to take more of an active role in it, budgets are protected for this year, as far as we're aware, but we expect that there's going to be a request for us to put some more funding in specifically for highway services next time round, so we kind of know that's coming. But I don't think we just want to keep funding the services as they are, I think we want to have more of an active say in how they're delivered, what they deliver, and how local people input into that. So I think it's a long way of saying, yes, we want to get more involved, but we don't quite know what that looks like at the moment.
Okay, yes, lady down the front. There's a microphone just coming.
Hi. I was really pleased to see about where you put the environment. That's really, I think, one of Taunton's USPs, because it is such a fantastic place to be, to live in, from that particular thing. I wondered what your strategy was to then also have, say, a community council or whatever, you know, how are you going to, how is the Taunton Town Council going to engage with the population? I mean, I've got a superb councillor who I know I send an email to and it comes whizzing back, so they are fantastic, but how, on a broader scale, would you engage with communities?
Thank you for the question. So we're just about to, we're in the process of setting up a big community engagement exercise, so exactly that which we're running in partnership, I may have started wrong with SAWK, yeah, who are the Somerset Association of Local Councils, so they're going to run that for us, and that's going to be all about going out to local people. We've kind of got the corporate plan, the plan that I've shared some of as the basis of that, but now there's some of the specifics, so people to feed in some of that and get involved in helping to shape that. If anyone ever has any particular areas of expertise or wants to feed things in, us as councillors, our officer team are always more than willing to sit down with people on specific issues, says something you really want to talk through, think there might be an improvement to be made in the town. We genuinely want to operate at the most grassroots level of operation, and we want to work with anyone and anyone who's really willing to get involved in that. So if there's any particular things, anything that anyone wants to feed into us, we'd love to hear you ongoing, but we are going to run a specific exercise exactly to do that, to engage the community in the things that we focus on.
Do I have any more questions from the floor? Yes, is that Dawn? Hello, Dawn.
Thank you. It's not a question, it's an expression of thanks, really. I'm the Somerset councillor for Comitro and Trel, and I know how hard all the people on this council have been working for the benefit of Taunton. I know how hard all the staff have been working. If you are on Facebook, you will see how much stick... If you are on Facebook, you will see how much stick councillors can get for not working very hard or not delivering. As well as all the volunteers who are doing the fantastic work through the charities, your councillors have worked their socks off for Taunton and they are doing their best to deliver for this community. And I just wanted that recognised because there are hours of evening meetings that they attend voluntarily, don't get paid for. As many of us councillors do, we do hours beyond what we are financed for, for the good of Taunton. And it's around the communities. I chair a local community network board. Everyone attends voluntarily from Taunton and six surrounding parishes. And I just want that recognised and I want to thank the Taunton councillors. They've chaired a work group under that. In her own time, she's a Taunton councillor who's sitting on the Taunton LCN. Please, please respect how hard these people work for very little reward.
Did you want to reply on behalf of us councillors?
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Lovely, thank you very much, Dawn, for that. Do we have any more? Yes, Brenda.
Thank you. Just a very quick question, really. In the consultation that's about to take place and in other communications with the public in Taunton, how are you going to reach those people who aren't online and who might have special needs but need to be included in the consultations and other stuff that's going on? It does worry me that we are overdoing the online stuff and for some people, it's not getting there. Thank you.
I think it's a very fair question and that's part of the driver of why we protected the information centre. Similar reasons, actually, the people who use that kind of service are those who aren't online. So I was in there the other day and a lady popped in with her home phone that she physically brought in from home because it wasn't working and she had no internet access to check whether the phone lines were down or whether it was the phone. So just had nowhere else to turn to and went to the information centre. So I think that service will provide an important link for us to those people. But we've got amazing people in the room today who have all of those connections into those groups. So I think it would be remiss of us to start from a blank piece of paper, try and do it ourselves. Actually, we should work with partners who are already doing that brilliantly, finding those hard-to-eat people, working hard to get in front of the people who don't get their voices heard and work with them to make sure that they can help us hear back from those people who they're helping. So I don't think we can do it all ourselves. I think we're going to ask some partners to help us. I think that's the most optimal way of delivering it.
Lovely, Susie.
Unless anyone has a question after, I hope this ends on a high. I'd also just like to thank you, Tom, for making me feel seen at Christmas. I spent about six weeks trying to get those lights on on St James Street and you did it after a day, I think, after contacting you. And going back to the very first question about how the town looks and the first impressions, I would love to meet with you and try and get some more things going with, because the businesses, we have so many amazing independent businesses in our town. Some of them have been here for over 50, 60 years and they are so passionate about the town, but a lot of them feel unseen. Money's being spent on events in the town. Lights. But I think you need to do more for the businesses. The pop-up shop is brilliant and I'm all for it. But please look at the businesses that are here now as well because, you know, things like maps and tidying up the town, graffiti, which I'd love to talk to you about. Yeah, and making the businesses that already exist feel safer. But mainly, it was to say thank you. Thank you for acting and I look forward to sitting down with you.
Absolutely, yeah, I'd be delighted to say. Thank you ever so much.
Now, we are approaching nine o'clock. It has been a long meeting, but I'm happy to take more questions of people. I don't want anyone to feel they haven't had a say. Yes, lady right at the back.
I think we're all here because we love our town. We love what Taunton offers. But we have a huge history of Taunton. We have underground tunnels. We don't do anything. We don't promote Taunton's history. People will come to Taunton to do ghost tours. They will come to Taunton to look at our history and we do not promote Taunton. Taunton gets overlooked. We've got all those wonderful pictures on Debenhams with all of our history on it. We have so many churches in Taunton. We have a huge plethora of history and we are not utilising it. People will come and there will be tourists that come to Taunton to learn about our town. We should be selling it and we're not. Can, are you going to, can you help?
Well, we're going to do our best, yeah. I mean, I don't disagree with a lot of what you've said. Yes, we should absolutely be selling. We need to stop Taunton being just somewhere where you might stop at the services on your way down to Devon and Corville. That's what we need to stop, is that kind of behaviour. That's fundamentally, or it's a gateway through to Exmoor is the other one as well. So people just whip through and up to Exmoor. So a lot more to do on that, I agree. We're working closely with Visit Somerset, who I know share that ambition. So good points, don't disagree, yes, wants to do more.
Brian?
Sorry. And then beyond that, immediately adjoining, you've got the riverside where there's been money invested in improving that. But those premises are empty. Now, how long are they going to be emptied and how can we encourage those to be occupied? I think the river is the heart of it. The county ground thankfully didn't move as it was thinking of years and years ago because it's so central to the town offering. And I agree completely. We've got a castle museum that is brilliant. A lot of people visit that anyway. But we've got all the kind of other history that is never actually made enough of. Dare I say, you know, Judge Jeffries and all that happened with that. It's all part of our history, it's there and it makes Taunton somewhat unique. And I think there's enough here in the town and its surrounding areas to make it a really good magnet for people to come and visit. It just needs to be developed and that's why I said earlier, it's got tremendous potential. We just need a bit of imagination and it doesn't cost a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, Brenda?
Just say, thirty odd years ago, thank you, when consultations were being taken at Hankridge, I did suggest that we put in a municipal camping site. Of course, it wasn't listened to, but it could have done wonders bringing in people to walk down the river into the town centre instead of going straight past down to the rest of the peninsula. Maybe we could think about it now?
I think there's an interesting blend of something that you just said there, Brenda, which is, so thirty years ago, I wasn't born. Sorry, but I wasn't. I wasn't born thirty years ago. So I think, so I think what we need to...
Just don't rub it in, all right?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I think what we need to be careful not to do is to always look back to what could have been. I think our job now is to go, yeah, let's take the learnings, but we need to look forward and what we can do. And I think investing and taking on some of those more innovative things that are... So we need to think about what our cutting edge is as a town. I think we've heard some of it in the history, but I think we need to use history to help inform us but not get caught looking that way all the time. We've got to look that way and forward because that's what will drive the town forward. If we keep looking backwards, we'll fall further backwards. We have to look forward.
There's still lots of tourists just driving straight past.
I would just like to, I think we're going to draw to an end there, but I'd just like to quote President Roosevelt, who wrote a letter to the mayor of Taunton, Massachusetts in 1939. And yes, history is important, but he wrote in that letter, "History does not stand still. The benefit of history is to develop the future and to guide the future and to build a future." And he wrote that in 1939. So we're going to draw this meeting to a close for this evening, the very end of our first town annual meeting. I would like to thank Tom Deacon for fielding all those questions, both known about and unknown about. I think you did a, you did an amazing job there, Tom. So thank you very much and we look forward to hearing from you again next year. So finally, though, just before I formally close this meeting, I'd just like to thank the officers for putting together this evening. I'd like to thank the recipients of the grants awards for coming along and telling us and reporting back about what they've been doing. Thank you to all those civic award recipients for coming along this evening and of course, Inspector Rebecca Wells Cole. And finally, finally, I'd like to thank you all for coming. We did a quick tally. I asked the officers on the front desk. We think we've had over a hundred people, a hundred people tonight. So I think we did a good job advertising there. And I very much hope that this is just the beginning of the next year where we'll see more people and more people and more people getting involved and engaging with their town and local community because we're all here because we want to see it better. We really want to promote it and we really all want to enjoy living here. So with that, I formally close our very first town annual meeting. Is there still tea and coffee at the back? No. Is the bar still serving soft drinks? No. So there is only one option left. And we look forward to seeing you once again. Now, before you do get up, the Sergeant to Mace, I shall hand over to him.
Ladies and gentlemen, please be upstanding for your mayor, councillor Nick O'Donnell, part of the meeting.
Can all relax now, it's fine.